We live?
We are live.
All right, I'll probably will tell you that tonight is the first night that we have, we'll be videotaping meetings. They will be, you can go to the webpage and see it at a later time if you wish, but they will be gone to the webpage. So, just to let everybody know that it has been video recorded tonight, and I'm assuming audio too, but it will be video recorded. As normal, we have a window of opportunity here prior to the meeting getting started for anybody that has anything that's not on the agenda, that would like to question or comment, I'd like to say no action can be taken, but we can at least entertain your questions or your comments or whatever. Yes ma'am?
Okay. I'm Darlene Hall, and I'm the Director of the Scott County Public Library, and I just wanted to have it in your minutes with the Commissioners. The Library Board, we agree, we've got some excess furniture from our renovation, and I have it in storage, and we were going to auction it, but I talked to you Bob about it. I know we're not going to get very much money out of it, so I think that's senseless, and I think that a lot of our tax and entities could benefit from some of it. So, I think it's coming, I talked to Tammy, in our local agreement, can we have that between the library and the tax and entities? And just let them choose some of the furniture if they want it, if they need it?
Yeah, I think, I don't see that would be a problem.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I don't see that.
So, there won't be no money exchange or anything, but it's just going to be the tax and entities that they can just take and use whatever?
Yeah, I think, I don't see any problem with that whatsoever. Do you?
I don't either, I think so, but if they've got some that they're not using, a surplus and somebody here in the courthouse or the Health Department or anywhere else that is a government entity.
So, I just wanted you all to have it like in your minutes, because we've got it in ours, so there's not any questions on either side.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anybody else? Okay. First up is the Income Survey Information from River Hills, BBC. How are you this evening? Almost said this morning. What's one of that basis?
I agree. I'm Jill Segues, River Hills, and I'm here to talk to you about, and I have a handout here for you, possibly conducting an income survey for the county to see if the county is eligible for certain types of grants. This is something that's been in the works for a few years, just Raymond Jones, I think before he was on his council the last time, it's been an appointment to our Board from County Commissioners. I've talked with him a few times, we've sat down with Tammy a few times over the last couple of years, to see how we might be able to get the county in a position to apply for some grants. One of the main pots of money is through the Community Development Block Grant Program. That's where, right now, you're doing the Infectious Disease and also the Life Spring Project that was awarded, but those were under a different national objective. That was limited clientele, where the people that were serving, at least 51% were low to moderate income. But if you wanted to do something, say it was county-wide, like an update of your confidentiality plan, or maybe some storm drainage, then we would have to qualify under an area-wide basis. The county itself, according to the data that we have to use, is not at least 51% low to moderate income. And in fact, the new data that was just released earlier this year says the county's 37.48% low to moderate income. This data, for lack of a better term, is not necessarily accurate in all cases. Where they get this is they extrapolate it from American Community Survey, and that doesn't always reflect an accurate picture, especially in rural areas. So, the state and HUD will allow people that don't qualify by their data, because they realize there are some inaccuracies, to conduct an income survey to see if you qualify. And so, what you have in front of you now is the actual survey document that would be distributed to the people. One side has the survey information, the other's just instructions. But I wanted you to have that, that information, and we can talk about that a little bit.
How would the survey, how would that be distributed? By mail to the people, or how would you distribute?
We still need to work that out, but something that happened between the first time that Tammy and Raymond and I talked, and this most recent time, is that the state, HUD is allowing the state to change the way they do income surveys. In the past, we would probably have to have gotten 400 or some odd responses from different people within the county, randomized, and you can do it by mail, phone, or in person. You can do it in those three ways. We would have had to have gotten that many responses. We were having trouble figuring out who was going to do that, how much it might cost to do that, and if it would be worth doing, whether you would get the result that you might want. As of April the first, they changed it to make it easier for people to do income surveys, at least how we do it in Indiana. So, right now, we would have to get 96 responses from the entire county, 96 people, not 96 addresses, which makes it a little bit easier and less cumbersome in talking with Tammy in her office than they handle that. We've talked about doing it by mail, actually, because we have to send out about 50 survey forms.
Would the...
Which seems crazy, but...
And just a thought, just a thought, but would it not maybe be a good idea to do this during school enrollment times at the schools?
You could do that, but the thing that we have to do is make sure that we take, get all the addresses, and that's something that Tammy said she and her office and your GIS system, we can work on getting all the residential addresses. It's just residential, it's not commercial, churches, not for profits, it's just where someone lives. And then we have to randomize that. So, if we were going to select, if we needed 96 people, then we've worked it out based on the tables and things they've given us, that we need to send out about 50 surveys, and only 50 addresses of all the addresses in the county are going to be selected. So, if those 50 people were at that, then we could get them to fill out a survey.
So, this is a random survey?
It's a random survey.
So, then...
It's a random survey.
Yeah.
So... How do you get, how do you, I mean, how do you get good numbers if they're, if it's a random survey? Because I read here, you're asking about, you know, elderly or disabled or...
Well, in that, then the technical part of the survey, the part that we really need is just that first box there. So, if you look to where it says one person, two persons, three persons, and the question is, like in my household, there are three persons, so I would be looking at, is my income above or below that $46,450? That's all that's required. The rest, there's a refuse and answer box, I mean, that's just trying to gather more information. We don't have to have that for the survey. So, and that's, I mean, as far as what someone would have to complete, or it's not cumbersome to do, it's just getting people to do it.
So, how do you, how do you come up with a course of theories that you're going to have someone with more income in the household than you are? How do you come up with a determination of how you're going to send a load?
How do we randomize it? So, what we've been, what we are supposed to do is to get that list of all the residential addresses. So, we'd get that list, we'd weed out anything like commercial, or if we knew a place was vacant, we would take that out, we'd have that in Excel spreadsheet, and there's a way to randomize it there, so that it pops up, and there's so many. We asked a number of things, like if we could take a certain number from each township, to try to just make sure that we got each part of the county, and they said, no, you can't do it like that, you have to do it like this.
So, there's a scientific method?
There's a method that we have to follow, and that's why if we get 96 people and only 30 surveys, then we can stop. But just to make sure, if not everybody will answer, not everybody might send it back, I mean, then we need to make sure that we get some extras and we can replace those that might not come back. And from what we were told, if we can do this more than once, if we need to. In the past, if it didn't come out, then they would count that as a survey that didn't come out.
So, you would have to do it all over again, or you'd have to do it again until you got your number that you wanted?
They said you can do it, continue to do it, until you've exhausted your possibilities, basically. I mean, at a certain point, there could be a time where it wouldn't be worth doing that again, but in the past, you're not allowed to do that. And you don't have to have someone certify it, and also in the old system, you had to have a statistician certify it, and that costs you a little bit of money, so. In order to do an income survey now, though, in the past, you could just say, okay, let's do it, and then we would start. Then, the Austin Community Rule Affairs requests that, you request permission to do an income survey. So, we drafted a letter for you, if you agree to do that, to send to them, to ask for permission to do a survey. They give you the permission, and we can start on that.
Question, is the money involved there from us, or what?
The money involved, I'm going to look at Tammy here, but the money involved is just, I think she can handle it all within her office, from what we've talked about. With the little amount of surveys that we have to get under this new system, as opposed to the old, then we can handle it that way.
And the surveys would be mailed by us, but yet they would be the recipient of the results. We would be out of it once we just did the mailing portion. Then we would be in control of tracking the results, not us.
But I'm assuming we'll pay you something to do this?
No, with the little amount of resources.
Good, thank you.
In the past, though, we were talking about thousands of dollars to get somebody to go out and do that.
I don't think Mike, Bob remembers that, but Mike and John don't understand the difference in what we're doing, and the difference in money was pretty dramatic.
Yes, very much so.
A lot of people were talking about having to hire people to come and do, go door-to-door, to do the other kind of survey.
Right.
It was a complicated, expensive proposition.
The other thing that we discussed, and you may have seen it recently, in just the last couple of weeks, Creuthersville needs to do an income survey for, I don't know, but remember, there's the water sewer. It's something they were having an issue with. One of the things that we discussed is that if we could put something in the newspaper or get something out so that people know, not everyone's going to get one of these, but it is important that if you do get one, that you fill it out and send it back in. We get something out there, social media, newspaper, just so people are aware, and they are more apt to respond than if we just send it out without that information.
I agree, I agree wholeheartedly with that. I think we should make them understand that if we can, that, you know, this is, you know, we're not collecting their personal info, you know, information. All we're trying to do is get a number that we may be entitled to, some grants, and things that's going to be beneficial to the county and the people that's involved here.
We missed out on some opportunities, oddly, because of the figures that Jill had showed that our income was higher than we expected it to be. So, we couldn't get some things that we might be able to qualify for if the income survey shows what we think it should.
This form is exactly what you're sending to them?
That would be it.
So, technically, outside of you knowing the address you're going to send it to, their name's not going to be on it?
Name doesn't go anywhere on it. As you see at the top, it has a survey form number.
Yeah.
So, we'll use that.
You'll not worry.
And then there will be a list address with numbers, so it's not anonymous, but it is confidential. So, when the survey comes back, we have a way of marking it, well, this, but also, so we know whether somebody responded from that address, but then it gets put into, yeah, we don't, we don't then match it up to say, Mike Jones, this is your survey form. I mean, those things are captured.
Well, I didn't see an address, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, no, we, and it's better if people don't. Now, some people might write it on there, just because they want to, but we don't do that.
But they're not going to be required or asked to put their name on it?
And, and all that matters is that we save the survey, we receive, this means surveys from these addresses, and we have those surveys, that same number of surveys.
You've got like a sample, do you believe, or something?
Yes, so we've worked with Tammy and the newspaper on that, yes. Because that has to say certain things, so that we don't skew it one way or the other.
Sure, yeah.
And this is a crucial step, because this could equal about $40,000 towards a confidentiality plan, which would in turn give us a basis to springboard off that for grant applications and whatnot, and also get our zoning freedom.
I'll make the motion if that's accepted.
Second.
Motion made, but Mike, accept it, John second, and I'll make it unanimous. We have a letter prepared.
Do you want to sign your packet?
Is it in there?
Yeah, get it on the letterhead, right?
I think it's right there.
There you go.
That's it.
One, two, how many do you need?
Oh, I need one and, and, I think you need probably, or even a hundred, whatever you want. Whatever one you want, since he signed it too. I appreciate that, and as soon as we hear back from Austin Community Rule Affairs, then we can get started. I haven't seen it in a while.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to know who's going to receive it, is it whole county? Or how many people out of Austin, or how many people out of Scottsburg is going to receive it?
The way that that works is we put all the addresses from all the residents in the county in a spreadsheet. We randomize it, so I can't tell you the answer, I don't know the answer, it'll just be randomized. The computer will randomize it, and we send all that information in with the survey. So, there's no way of telling, yeah, there's no way of telling how many are coming from Scottsburg, how many are Austin.
Be like a random group.
Right, it's just, it's just going to pull out addresses.
Well, there's going to be more, you know, I don't know what you're, what kind of numbers you're looking for, but you said 46,500, and there's going to be a lot of people not make 46,500. I can tell you right now, I don't.
So, for, and that's for a three-person household? So, the numbers are different depending on household numbers, so, and that's based on 80% of the median household income? So, but at the end of the day, we can't tell you until we randomize the list where that's coming from. We did try to make sure that we could get them from different areas, divide it up by township, maybe, and just make sure we got certain from each township, and they said, no, you can't do it like that. That we have to just randomize all the addresses and go with the, or it's how the name would come up with.
And you think, you think 50 or less than 100 will do it?
We have to have at least 96 people. So, 96 people means that if you had four in your household and only one survey, then that counts as four people. So, we estimate, based on the data that they, that the state told us to use, that there is...
So, it's like a husband and wife, you're going to use their two incomes, and so that adds for two people.
Right, that's two people. So, you could have a lot of higher populated households, or you could have a lot of one person households, that you have to, yeah, that's fine, no, that's not a problem at all. According to the data we're supposed to use, then they're saying, on average, there's 2.6 people per household in Scott County. So, then that means we have to send out at least 37 of these surveys. We're probably going to send out a few more than that, because not everybody will respond, and not everybody is going to have 2.6 people in their household.
Okay.
And that's, that's the methodology that we're told to use, and when we put all that together, we have to send all of that in with the survey in order to be allowed to use it, so that they can check to make sure we follow that methodology. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, thank you.
Now, the best case scenario that we could ever have is 100%. People get them, fill them out, return them.
Right.
But that's, we know that's probably not going to happen.
And once we would get to the 96 people that we needed, we'd just, we'd be done.
All right.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up is the courthouse office relocations, and basically, I think it's the extension office here. Tammy, come on up here.
What, I went to talk to Sam, I went to talk to him, I had to come up here. And I, you don't care if I talk personally?
No, that's fine.
It's quite simply, we've got a maggot working right now, and we really don't have a place. And we had talked earlier about relocating her, probably out of the John Jones building, and it's just simple, the fair's over now, the way to go after the fair over. And I just wanted, maybe as a unit there, if I figure out where we're going to go on this maggot thing, maybe make arrangements, move, that's what we want to do. I just think we've got to get this process rolling, the maggot especially.
He's just probably emailed, I said last time we met, I hope it's not going to be all that.
And again, I have been thinking on that too. One of the places in that, you know, maybe you can go look, and maybe you all may have, but one of the places I did think about was the USDA building.
They have seats?
They do have, they have some space out there, but I believe, I can't remember what agency was in there, that was renting that space, and it is available. Don't know that it would work, that would be, you'd need to go out and look at it, tell us if you think it would. We would have to check to see what the rent would be on that for space out there, but it would do one thing, it would put all agricultural-based entities in one area, because you've got soil and water out there, and you've got the agent, you have to have your office out there. It would, it would possibly be workable, I don't know, but that would be something that I would actually audit.
What's in the old government building? Post office? That's where they used to be, a hundred years ago.
Yeah, you know, I don't know that, I don't know what's, what's there, I don't know, I have no idea what's there.
Because I know a lot of those places, they all moved down and out there.
Yeah, and again, I don't, I don't know what's in there, but maybe something that we could look at. But I just thought maybe, you know, kind of that one-stop shop if you're in agriculture related, you know, you've got your extension office, you've got the USDA, and you've got soil and water and all the underwater growth out there. If that would be doable, I, you know, I think it would...
Do you think, do you think we ought to get an estimate of what it costs to clear, you know, fix a space out there for her, then we have, at least have an estimate of what's, what that option would be?
Yeah, I think, I think that's no problem, I think we should do that.
Yeah, that'd be nice, next meeting, we could move on this.
You want to come up, I'm sorry, you want to come up?
John Jones.
Yeah, I think, I think we should do that, because it's something we're going to have to...
Yes, then we could weigh, we own it, prepare it to rent. If we do an estimate, just, I hate to get off topic, because it is, whoever does it, they would be presenting something, and if we decided to bid, those other bidders would already know his price. Just a thought. I don't know if we have to bid, we have to, because we're in County, County. But once you give that estimate that somebody gave it, they want to bid on it, basically, the other two would come in a lot of $500 cheaper.
Are there any original?
Am I wrong on this?
No, you're not wrong.
No, no, you...
We know what, we know what it costs us to do it for the Health Department, but there was already stuff, already some of the just being, and they, they had to, they had to rearrange some stuff, but I mean, they pretty much got it.
This is a shell.
So, I, yeah, I've been out there, there's no insulation, no...
She's talking HVAC.
Everything, you know.
They all have to be separated, and then I'll then, somehow.
Mount, also, they can electric, they're going to have to separate.
Good mount, so if we're understanding good, working out hitching, next week we'll be back. I don't know if it would match for that.
Use this room right here?
Well, that may be what happens, but we're kind of under the gun on this, I think. Need to get help her out quick, so we can make arrangements down there, but...
Are there any others, basically, in the county that might be...
I'll do some others, I think, you can go around square, there's one place. Deering's over there wants to rent.
I don't know if that's big enough.
John, Deering, how much space do you need?
We need about three staff educators and a secretary in storage.
There's more space over there than what you've got now.
Oh, is there?
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of room over there.
Okay.
I don't know what he wants, I don't know what he wants.
John, Deering, stakes of the library.
Try that, down the river. Whatever.
And I don't know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I do think we need to look at, because we do own the John Jones, but I think we also need to look at dollars and cents here, too, what is, what's going to be, what's going to be the cheapest route to go. Again...
Sounds like you don't want to get pretty quick.
Yeah, and again, things are moving in a timely fashion here, but again, I want to go back to the fact that, you know, even John Deering's office over there, I don't think in there, but that is, I think, that's the old post office, correct?
Yeah.
And that's something that we may give them, I don't know, we may want to look at and see if we can, I just feel, feel like that somewhere along the line, that we're going to have to move the probation department out of, out downstairs. I think it, as I've said before, takes four to 500 convicted felons out of this courthouse a week, and I just think, you know, it does make sense to me to do that. And so, I'd like to see, whatever we do, it may be in conjunction with or whatever, so.
Deering, he's asking everybody if he can look at his place, I don't know if you could or not, if you mind looking, or is that a problem?
Okay.
Because, well, has he got a price on it, or what? No, he didn't give me a price, he'd want to sell or rent. He's like, he's like offering the county first, it's like, just a thought, where we want to go in the future.
In the meantime, in the meantime, if you really go out and check the USDA out, and basically Bob out there, and Bob back there, and go out and look at that area, and even if it's short-term, you know, then we may have to do something, I don't know, but...
Well, that's not, that's not the ideal.
No, that's not ideal, I'm understanding that, but at least it's after the fair, but not before the fair.
Just as an update, we produced, announced that they may offer the tops very soon for that part-time, they in our position, he accepted. Where'd somebody get a retirement?
There you go, there you go.
It's really good this year.
So, there's a lot of kids involved.
A lot of kids, everybody's clean, they're happy.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
EM House Department Quarterly Update. That's all the review and vehicle purchase.
There's going to be a...
Take that off.
Take that off. It's similar, but it was a mis, a miscommunication.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that evening, I'm about to afternoon. This is very similar to the last one I did, a presentation, presented to you guys back in March, well, the first part, January, June, March. There's a few things that are missing, I tried to get those figures from endless billing, I don't know if it was on vacation all week or what, but I will have a charge summary, like I did the first presentation, but everything else is still going to be very similar. I can see on page one, we trended up, April, May, and then June, we fell down nine compared from 2018 to 19 on our runs. Then compared to the first and second comparison, we're 17 run difference, so we're staying kind of right on track throughout as we progress through, happy year now, so it's ended six months. Any questions on that first one?
No, the, April runs, it looks like they was...
Yeah, we...
They was up, what, 30, probably 30 runs, or?
21 at the bottom, yeah, at the bottom.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're up, we were up 21 runs from 18 to 19 in April, so.
Okay.
So, that was a pretty good month for us. And then, like I said, comparison from first and second quarter, we're only 17 run difference. Third page there, breaks it down as far as what we've done as far as ALS and DLS transported runs, and then it breaks it down into the non-villables. I'll come back to this, because I have an idea, I think that I need you guys' support, and I think that we could kind of turn something around for the non-villable side, but I'll come back to that. But we're still very similar, we went down a little bit, 2% in the billable, and obviously that 2% difference went towards the non-villable side. So, the first quarter was a little over 80% billable, and the first one was like 18%, so everything just kind of just popped around for this quarter. Any questions on that?
No, not on my part.
Okay. The next page is similar, is everything that was appropriated to us minus, you per your payroll and stuff like that. There's a few things that obviously that are highlighted on my end. The refunds are in the negative, that's just basically where the insurance has paid us, well, then also there's kind of a double payment from the actual patient itself, so we have to issue a refund back to them. But we're getting payments, and so we just have to, that's just where we're negative, we have to reissue those back out. And then the insurance was from the first quarter, where we paid everything upfront, there was no consideration for the increase in the insurance, so that's why that was in the negative. And then there's two on the bottom, as far as the contractual services and accreditation. I have, I got a little for additional... Uh, I have, I gotta go for additional, uh, later on this month, uh, for some of those line items due in fact, the paramedic classes coming up. We gotta make new money around, that way we can accommodate for the increase of pay, uh, patients, increase of students. Um, there's a lot of upfront charges that we will get back that won't go into these line items, but go into the general budget. Uh, cause we gotta come up with, you know, we buy everybody books upfront, um, their shirts are incorporated into that, their background checks are into that. Uh, there's some extra stuff that gets added into that, uh, so we'll get a lot of that back, but it won't go into that specific line item, it just come back into the general budget. So, um, any questions as far as anything you see on that that sticks out to you guys?
Uh, so, on the original appropriations here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, looking at this, what was appropriated on some of these, this being July the third.
Mm-hmm.
We have surpassed, uh, the fifty percent mark on a lot of that. So do you see it towards the end of the year, I mean, how do we, how do we make that up to, do you have to be back for additional appropriations then?
No, this, this similar thing happened to us last year, we're able to move within the series, uh, cause we won't use all of certain line items. There's always some that's left over that we can move and just transfer to make up any difference if they do go negative or to make it through for the rest of the year. Um, I know, but we had to do that, um, on, probably several occasions, but there was a few that came up last year.
So you're talking about that, you can move the, yourself here.
Yeah, if, yeah, if I stay within the same like three hundred series, um, I don't have to come in front of the council, but if I want to move from four hundred to three hundred series, I have to come and get your approval.
Okay.
As far as that. There's some stuff that, um, that I went through as far as kind of reducing costs, I looked at our cable bill and we were paying almost a hundred fifty bucks a month, I'm now down to seventy seven dollars a month. We were paying for stuff that nobody even watched, um, and, and things like that, that, that money will add up in the long run. So there will be extra money each month that we can move around if need be and stuff like that, that I looked at as a whole.
You're still, you're still above your halfway mark. But you've also, uh, I see where you, you said earlier about your insurance, I mean, that came out.
Yeah, that's a one one supplement at the end of the year.
Yeah, and that's a killer, cause I mean, what you appropriated for was twice as much, so.
And we adjusted for that for next year, that way it's not negative right off the bat, so. The next page is our supply company where we were, a bulk of our supplies, just to kind of give you an idea of where we were, kind of, uh, from January one to, uh, April, uh, sorry, May. Last year we were at twenty-two thousand, this year we're at twelve thousand, so we cut it almost in half, uh, just by kind of watching. And like I told you in the first quarter, still looking for quality products, but as far as for consumer, you know, cheaper in bulk and things like that, so. I like to see that number, I'm, so at least I'm doing something, so, um, that just kind of gives us an idea of where we were at the end of the year. The next one is, is our deposits. As you can tell in the bottom right hand corner, um, we're down twenty-three thousand, um, ish from our first quarter to second quarter. Uh, in June, just, I mean, to be honest, really wasn't really a good month for us, I don't know why. I mean, I can give that answer and figure out if it was just insurance reasons or if it was just personal stuff with our self pays and we're just sort of getting them. But as you can see, we started out good and then we had two very slow months and then the last week of June, you know, we're up, we got thirty-one thousand probably. So, kind of, we just had, kind of hit a little low there for June and then it started picking back up, but I'll be able to tell when our trend looks like it's gonna be as we go on.
And if you can handle right now.
And we'll get a good comparison to see, um, where we're trending, so it gives us an idea. Overall, we're going in so far, six hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents for the year. But like I said, that could be some prime stuff, eighteen and stuff, like we said, the first quarter.
Do you, uh, do you have to, you know, kind of figure on what, what we actually write off that we don't collect from the insurance and we don't, we don't collect from the individual?
I get a, a non-billable form from ambulance billing, but it's not really write offs, it's due to insurance stuff, uh, it, uh, Medicare, Medicaid, that type of stuff, so that number, if I remember reading it right, was like some forty-five thousand and change that didn't get billed. Or we, we deem non-billable for the month of June, so if you do that times three, you know, that's, that's a pretty good chunk of money. But I don't know why those would get knocked off, but as far as write offs, I gotta review all those and that goes in front of the, um, EMS oversight. And then they collectively group as a whole, maybe the city, yeah, we'll go ahead and write it off or no, we'll go ahead and pursue it, going to collections or.
But is there a number, is there a number that you, you know what it is, that for each quarter? What that number's gonna be, that, you know, we had this many runs and this was our billing rate, here's what the insurance paid and here's what people paid towards their bill and then here's why it didn't get paid at all, I mean.
They send you a monthly thing, but everything is incorporated as far as when they receive the payment. Uh, so it could be a few months prior, but it will go on this quarter or this month instead of this. So it's really not, yeah, not like a tit for tat type thing, so it may be a few months.
Okay, so at the end of the year, when we're, when we're closing our books for the year, I mean, is there a number where you could say, here's what we didn't collect on?
Yeah, I, I can get that number, yeah.
That's why.
Cause all, all I have to do is just say, you know.
I'm just trying to figure out what we did.
Six, six months of this year, what has been our non-billable, like what has been?
What we didn't collect on and what we decided, whether it's through you or whatever we didn't go after, I mean, so.
It seemed to me like, I remember I, in the past, was that number around seventy percent that you actually collect on? Does that sound, and I'm going off the memory here, but I.
Yeah, cause.
Does that sound right, Bob, around seventy?
Cause you asked this question like the first time and I was totally backwards, it was three percent or something that was collected through New World. And then, but it, we were over fifty percent that was collected from what we billed the first quarter. So it was anywhere fifty like to seventy percent from what I remember.
So the other part of that, how, how much do we bill to an insurance company, just like you would if you go to your doctor, your doctor bills them? How much of the insurance company says we're not paying that, or of your bill, you know, we're not paying you a hundred percent of your bill, we're gonna pay you. Is that where you're coming with the seventy percent or that, that's saying we're not paying all of that total?
I think they're going after the total bill and then what we received. It's what they're going after, cause you can bill Medicare and Medicaid ten thousand dollars and they're like, we're only gonna give you four thousand.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
So, yeah, so.
So how much of our bill that we're saying, here's the bill for this run, but they're only gonna pay you seventy percent of that, I mean.
I would, you don't know what's on my head, I would have to look into that. Cause I mean, me and the, the thing, the ambulance billing is set down.
I'd be curious of how much we're billing somebody and how much the insurance is, is telling us they're not gonna pay, you know.
Well, I'm gonna muddy that water real in a minute, go ahead, Bob, I'm gonna let you jump in.
I think that, uh, I think that your collection company could give you pretty much, if you talk to them, they can give you pretty much the answers of my charter bill.
Okay. So, cause you know, doctors gonna go out there and send you a bill and then, you know, by the time you get in the mail, that insurance says, here's what I'm gonna pay on it and the rest of it, you either write off or they just write it off.
Well, and I think that was right too, like, if you bill something and you have no insurance, but you have money, then you pay the biggest amount. If you have insurance, you don't pay that much, but you get the money back, but if you're, if you're depending on Medicare, you're getting a balance, you're getting less than you're paying.
Cause their debt says what they're gonna pay.
But, but with that being said, and that's a question, I think, maybe a legal question here. My understanding is, is through Medicaid and Medicare, they have a, a set price that they're gonna pay for an ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, that price is a lower price than what they're paying for an Indy cab to haul people to these.
Direct ones.
Pain houses, pain houses as well. So at that point, I'm not understanding how that can work and who we need to see or, or talk with. But when you have a, my understanding that they're paying more money towards cab rides to these cabs that's hauling people to pain clinics than what they are paying to an ambulance service to transport people from, whether it be the hospital to a nursing home or any kind of ground, any kind of ground.
This is the desire of what they're wanting to get, I guess they're willing to pay whatever they want. Or what, they're willing to pay whatever they need to to get the pain clinics, is what you could say.
You're right, yeah. But, but it's still the same, so same people paying it. I mean, if it's Medicaid, Medicare, you don't think, you don't think so?
No. And if put power trap by, it's the same process that hospitals and the doctors, yeah, same thing, almost exactly.
I mean, if they had.
Yeah, but that Medicaid, Medicare thing drives the market.
Well, it kind of seems to me like the tail is white and the dogs always make care of it, to be honest.
Well, you all.
What you, what you, what you wanna do?
Small, small claims against.
Well, but I guess. Yeah, I got, I got a frame right now that I'm signing, wasn't.
That's certainly a write off we do. And somewhere along the line.
Once, yeah.
Cause once it hits New World, I never hear anything.
Yeah.
You're getting what you get and you're taking through a small claim for what you can come in, you're gonna do everything.
So, so this number here, the six twenty-nine, four thirty-two.
Yes.
Is that pretty well in line, where's last year's number, is that pretty well in line with last year's?
I don't, I don't have last year's.
You don't have that?
I do not, I could get it, I mean, if you wouldn't start comparison.
I would just, I just, you know, well, if your, if your runs, I'm, I'm gonna assume this, if your runs is comparatively the same, it's probably, but again, out of all the money, it's gonna be, you know, comparatively the same, but. You know, to me, that's, six months out of the year, that's not bad, I think, I think.
Do you have, uh, do you have anything to break down or anything on your run close, um, as far as what you ran on?
Yeah, if you go, as far as like nine one one doses transferred.
No, what I'm asking for, do you, and I'll.
You talking about overdose on chest pain?
I'll just be blunt, how many overdoses have you ran on the last quarter?
Of that, I don't know, that number here that I gave you that had, the peregrine graph, is just what we treated and transported. I can look, I had to specifically look at that reason for dispatch and I just incorporate all of those into one, that way it gives me overall.
Can you, can you give me that?
Yeah, so you want overdoses or you?
I wanna know how many overdoses you had the first quarter, I wanna know how many overdoses you had the round second.
Why, do you want to, as they also come into us, cause they'll come into us, overdose a lot of times.
Oh, I know, they come in and it's, it comes some day or whatever, so. No, I don't need it.
I can do that, call on it. Everybody wants. Hundred fifty mils you guys then?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Why don't they throw another thing, like, if you're gonna throw overdoses, since they charge for Narcan, the five hundred dollars a shot, throw that in there too? Cause that'll tell you how many, how much extra money you're spending for Narcan.
Or on your Nar, while you're, you're carrying a different type of Narcan.
Yeah, we, the Narcan that the police and the public have, uh, that is, through the health department, that's free. We're still paying out, out of.
Free, it's free to the health department.
Yeah, we're still paying for ours on our ambulance.
I would, I would be interested, I would, I would be interested in what you just mentioned, how many doses of Narcan that we have used in the first two quarters.
Yeah, that'd be something the health department, cause they travel. Oh, to us, oh, yes, yes. It, it would be, it's, your number will not be accurate due for the simple fact, when you work a cardiac arrest, they teach you to reverse your H's and T's, which is the reason why your heart stopped. Uh, if they're unconscious, obviously their heart's not breathing or beating, we don't know if they take anything, so we'll go ahead and administer it and just in a hope that if they did, it'll reverse that. So there's been many times that's gonna be pushed and really, then what even an overdose, it was just a person they don't, for unknown cause. So we're just trying to reverse those causes. Yes.
Well, that's the first, you know, when you don't know what it is and nobody's telling you what it is, then that's the first line.
If it's a crack arrest for unknown origin or region or reason, then, you know, we'll, we'll just rule out everything and just start pushing to try to reverse anything or change.
Especially, I know, I've, I've heard before, oh, no, they don't do directs and then you, you shut Narcan to them all of a sudden, they set up and start talking to you, so.
Now, if it is a dispatched as a possible overdose, then you can look and see, because sometimes we have, the one, the one I'm thinking of, we get four doses of Narcan, one person forward.
You guys have a favor for that part of the, you know, where the answer that.
Because we, because we charge, I'm sorry.
No, you're, if you don't keep going down.
Because, because, because we charge for our runs, we don't.
You don't charge?
We don't itemize things, we don't charge for things that we do, it's just we charge for a run, but because that's enveloped into that, that's why we come.
Also, your, your Narcan's different than my Narcan.
Yes.
You've got four milligrams, you don't care to.
But yours is, you're injecting yours into it and IV and working on it.
If we itemize bill, then we could get the Narcan, we just wouldn't be able to charge for that, but where everything's incorporated, we don't itemize billing, uh, we can't.
It's a public health issue. But what the police fire, first responders have, or even people home, you know, people in their high residence, is more slow reacting than what they have.
If we put it by IV.
Yes.
It's very fast, yeah.
It's just the route.
Yes, it's the route, you know, where if you give a shot of muscle, it's gonna be slower, give a shot of drugs, it's gonna be right in between those two.
So, you can get that.
Okay, I got those, all three of those picked, trying to get back.
That's good.
All right, so any other questions on that, on that paper?
No, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
No problem. Uh, the next one, like I said, I'll come back to that, so SORs. Um, obviously, you know, they're a very big portion of our run. We get turned out all around the night, uh, sometimes just to check on people because they don't feel good and things like that. Um, so I know in the beginning, before I even came in a short time, while Tammy was here, they billed for SORs prior, but it was for everything. You know, matter, no matter if you didn't call nine one one, somebody called nine one four you, you got a bill. Uh, so I did some research and talked to Jim Freeman at the ambulance billing, I talked to, and he told me some people that's doing this as well, I talked to Troy who's at Washington County. And then my brother just said they're gonna start this as well as New Chapel, um, is billing for certain SORs. All SORs will be reviewed by me, um, and I give you the policy that I kind of came up with. Basically, all SORs that, once they get completed, will be given to me, I'll review them and then based upon whatever is written in the run report, uh, if it all is, um, originates, uh, here you go. Originates within the household, uh, if we give them medication, um, if, I ran it. If we give them medication or start an IV or anything like that, SAS, do a twelve lead of the comfort chest pain, then something like that will be billed for the time, the fuel, the wages and things like that. Uh, one piece of paper I just gave you, uh, I basically kind of did a comparison from May, I reviewed all SORs, there were eighty-six in May that were at non-billable runs. Some of those were canceled runs, insurance issues, et cetera. I went through and found that seventy-five of those were SORs and then I, based upon the policy I developed, forty-seven of those were billable. So therefore, we can turn around in seventy-five of those, uh, bill for another additional thirty-five hundred dollars, basically in the month of May. Um, Jim thought a hundred dollars was too much, he said, because you're gonna be billing the patient personally, you're not gonna look through insurance, because insurance typically don't pay for the non-transport orders. Um, Troy over at Washington County says about fifty percent of them will pay, the other thirty percent will, just going away. Um, Jim also said, Jim Freeman said that it's nothing really you want to pursue in court, because you'll be costing more court cost and things like that. To pursue somebody for, um, in small claims, uh, in harnesses or anything like that, then you won't just get your bill. Um, so basically, based upon the month of May, I, that was about sixty-five percent of the SORs billable, so back into two thousand eighteen.
I'm getting that right, you want to bill them seventy-five dollars and hope they pay.
And hope they pay, but that's, that's money that we don't have, but, you know, we're going out to these people's houses to it during the morning, um, and I read one and I won't repeat that because.
Same ones over and over.
Yeah, and, you know, it just tells us all the time, and Tammy can talk to this, uh, and a little bit when she speaks about something, you know. Family members are, don't care like they used to, they'll just say, call EMS and go pick up mom and dad off the floor, they won't get on bed. So, you know, and I, granted, I know that that, it sounds kind of morbid and stuff like that, but, you know, I ran through this, our oversight committee, um, in June said, I feel like you guys are reviews, you probably want to be, use the review systems in our county. And she said, you know, we're gonna have to start doing something and they voted to go forth with this and that's why I'm here today. Is start to recoup some of these costs, you know, if, if we start, um, IVs or D50, because there was sugar up left or what, give them Narcan to wait till they decide not to go, we gotta try to recoup some of these costs. Recoup some of these costs will work just for the people. So this is kind of my suggestion of what we can do to maybe try to, um, sort of adapt it. As far as all our SORs and field SORs, maybe get some of them back.
I will, I'm sorry, fourteen, fourteen years ago, when EMS started here, we initially started doing this, only returning like thirty-five dollars for a run, but there was no, there, there wasn't this involved. And so what happened is we started getting people coming to the station complaining, saying, I don't think I'll have to pay this, I didn't even call you, my neighbor called, I mean. I didn't even call you, my neighbor called, I mean, and so there, there was no, there, there was no way of sorting and saying, okay. Like, like Stan here, of saying, okay, if it's a third-party call, now we're not gonna bill this person, because they hit calls. If it's a traffic accident, people, they couldn't call nine-one, we're not gonna.
Right.
You know, for that, um, if, also, the, the other thing here, this accidental life ward, we get a lot of those, where the people have a life ward. That necklaces or bracelets and such, and they accidentally press it or whatever, and so, those types of things. We wouldn't be going after.
At the same time, with more discounts and letting them call, because they don't have seventy-five dollars.
Right. And, and if they, if they don't pay it, then they don't pay it.
Yeah, I understand.
And so.
But they don't know what's going on.
They, they don't. And, and I don't want people knowing. And I don't want people knowing that, you know, paying this.
The only one I see on here that I, I'd probably disagree with, I mean, is, is the lip assist, cause. A lot of times, fires dispatch those as well, and I mean, most of the time, it's somebody that is by themselves or lives, lives a home alone. And, uh, they trip and fall, and I've got a friend of mine that I probably go to.
Isn't that possible?
I do too, but I, I, uh. What happens if you get dispatched to a lip assist, saying. Lexington Fire District, getting the Lexington Fire Department, gets toned and they're there before you do, and they pick the gentleman or lady up. And put them in bed or back in the chair, and you never make the scene, I mean.
Then it just goes as a canceled run and, and there's no bill issue.
So.
And like I said, I'm not trying to sound mean or.
I know, I've, I've heard the same comments, and I know the same people, I mean, I run, we run on, I can tell you about ten addresses right now, I mean, and you go. You know, multiple times a week, and they know that's, they know that all they have to do is call nine-one-one, and you guys are gonna come and help them, and they're gonna.
It's just like.
I would also bet those same ones never pay. Well, that may be true, but here's, here's, here's why I see, I don't know, probably, again, you know, there is. You know, there is no tax dollars going into, uh, the ambulance service, and they're, they are a business, and at that point. They cannot continue to operate, uh, by not receiving payment. Uh, again, I think, I think myself, I'm okay with it, I think you bill it, I think you see it as, you know, again, you're probably not gonna collect a hundred percent.
No, I don't really get a hundred percent at all.
Anything that you collect is certainly gonna be accounted for that, because if not, somewhere along the line, no, it does, no, they have to go on the tax roll somewhere. If, if, and if things.
Yeah, but I think, best, and I understand that it's not a tax roll, but. I don't know that John Chief Public knows that's, that their tax dollars isn't going to the, to the ambulance service.
And that may not, and it may not, but.
They may think, hey, I pay taxes, and, you know, they're, you know, why don't they come here, and why am I getting billed, I pay my taxes, and that should be a service. Um, but, you know, if we educate them, say right now that your tax dollars aren't going to.
And, and I'm gonna put a press release out, you know, and I mean, Tammy threw up something, as that gets out to explain, you know, not really why we're doing it, but. We're gonna be changing our policy, and then if you do receive a bill, this is why, and just basically, let the public know, it's not just gonna be an instant thing. Uh, there will be a, a press release and things like that.
But most of the lip assists, I won't say most of them, because most of the people that are on the floor aren't gonna pick, they're not gonna be close to their phone, so. You know, somebody has called, whether it's a third-party or, or somebody, they can't get ahold of somebody, and thinks, well, they fell a hundred times last week. So, they probably fell again, so call them nine-one-one, so, uh, but.
And not all of them that way, I was just on one a couple of weeks ago, I responded, it was in the morning, I just went with the career album. And the guy was like, hey, can you turn my comfort pod on for me, and let you do this, and.
Like did it?
Yeah, I mean, we did, I mean, I don't want to complain, they did it, but that's the kind of stuff.
I know.
They'll call us and, hey, while you're here.
But most of these runs, you get there and you don't do anything for them, or you do do something for them. Like help them get out of bed, or help them, I mean, I'm just curious, when, when you say SORs, are there.
Sometimes.
You're not doing anything when you get there, or me, not?
Sometimes we're not.
Sometimes.
Sometimes we're not, we're, they'll say.
Fell out, or this, or that.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a pretty good chance the police are probably there too, but I'm just guessing, usually.
No, usually on code ones, no, we don't get, usually all, like lip assists and things like that, if there's an emergency, it's usually code one, it's just, that's okay. Um, and then sometimes, like you said, the police, uh, fire department will get, uh, toned out, uh, if it's a code three run, because we're gonna get SORs and code three runs too as well. So, but if you want the lip assists taken out, I'd be more inclined to come with that, uh, I'm just looking to have a bridge gap, that's all I'm doing.
The thing with the lip assists, and here's where I come up with that, is just like John said. If you get an elderly person that's on a limited income, and they have tendencies to fall. They're not gonna call you, and they're gonna lay on the floor.
Right, and I don't want that, I don't want that, and, and like I said.
But there are people, they're not just that, there are people who will be a doctor.
Yeah. I don't move that person, thinking it's gonna cost me seventy-five hours because of help, yeah.
I think more looking along lines of, we have people who, we respond, we, they're in a diabetic emergency. We start an IV, we give them D fifty. That wakes them up, they're fine, and they sign that statement of release and say, I, I don't wanna go to hospital, so we're out.
But you give it to service.
We, we started an IV, we used D fifty, we gave them medication.
Maybe charged.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the ones we're more looking at.
I think, it's still, as I understand it, involves your discretion, even about somebody that, that has. Assist button, it's still your discretion, and you know who they are, and you've been doing this for a long time. I don't see anything wrong with that either, cause you know which ones are using assist.
Yeah, like what I said, we can.
I just like.
Some should be charged, both ways.
I just don't wanna blanket people thinking.
Cause you're gonna, you're gonna hear a lot of repercussion, you guys, that they're like officials. So, you know, I'm not so much, but I just, that's why I don't wanna get you guys on board, with your support, then, you have people coming to do that.
I don't have a problem.
That is just, that was just kind of a dad again, things on that deal.
So, this has already got approved through your board?
This is, there was approved.
Oversight.
Yeah, the oversight committee approved for me to go forward with it and bring it to you also once. If you guys are on board, then all I gotta do is make a few phone calls to, to give a agreement ambulance billing, to add this to our current billing rates, and.
But the bottom, but the bottom line is, you're gonna review each of these.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's interesting that I will review every SOR, I've already got it.
I would also like to do it just like on a yearly basis, and see if there is any instances.
And if it don't work, we can change.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I, I'm all for it, but I wanna do it also with review this, like you're saying. And if, if you think that people won't call in to their help, I mean, I, I'd have to think twice about this, so.
And, and I'm open for, I'm not against that.
So, you'll come back to us in later days, maybe, or whatever.
Yeah, we can do a six-month trial of it.
That'd be a good idea.
And once, once it, once it gets, it goes into fake, then.
But you may not get somebody, you may not get, the people you're gonna get to pay, the, the elderly people that are gonna write checks and say, here's seventy-five dollars.
Right.
You know.
And I, I'm okay with it.
On a six-month basis, right?
If you want trial the rest of this year, or whenever I can get everything in, in order, then, we'll do six months from start date.
I'm sure that. First of the year.
Okay.
So, I make a motion for some of it is on a six-month basis, is that all we need?
That'll work.
Okay.
John made a motion that we build a lot of the SORs procedures here for six-month basis. Uh, trial run for six months, here are seconds.
I'll second.
I'll make it unanimous, you know, try it for six months, and see where we're at, it's over from there.
And that'll also be a six-month to work out.
Yes.
Yeah.
One more thing, um, I'll let Tammy explain what it is.
Okay.
Quick update on the training institute, we have a class starting next, this coming Monday. Um, right now, I have eighteen people who have paid the down payment, or the full amount. Um, to start that, may have a couple more, so it's gonna be a good-sized EMT class. We have right now, um, close to twenty applications for the paramedic class, um, that will start in September. So, so that's going on very well. Very excited about the, uh, like this EMT class, because one of the things that we always wanted with our training institute. Was that we were kind of a regional training, and, uh, when you look at where folks are coming from. To take these classes, and not just medicine, talk to basic EMT classes, um, I have coming from Bedford, Kentucky, Milton, Kentucky. Um, from Lawrenceburg, from, uh, Crawford County, Jackson County, Clark County, I have several from Jeffersonville coming out. Um, so, there's only, I think, this, uh, the seventeen, eighteen I have right now. Uh, I think only two are from Scott County, and so they're coming from other places and coming in. Um, so, you know, that's, that makes us feel like we're doing something.
Regional.
Regional, we must be doing it right, and so they're, they're, they're coming, they're coming from, from far away to come in now. So, that's, that's pretty amazing. Um, so, uh, you know, doing a lot of, a lot more public. Community-type things as well, um, going to, whether it be, you know, career days at the schools. Or going to do community health series, and helping to the public free of charge, to come in and learn about everything from strokes to heart attacks, to. You know, what they can do on all of these different, uh, different things, so, excited about the, the public aspect of getting more out into the community as well. And, um, you know, I always think it's very important to give back, instead of always being seen as taking something or billing for something. But we give back free of charge.
That helps very, very successfully.
It was okay, we, for our first time, we'd like to see bigger, bigger numbers the next time, but, uh, but yeah. It, it, it went well, so I think we've got plans to do again this fall, so. Um, the other thing that, that Tyler was alluding to there is that we, we had some. Discussion from within MS with our employees, and, uh, a really good idea was suggested, and, and for lack of a better term. It was called town hall, a town hall meeting of all our employees, where they could get together, there would be someone there as a liaison. And they could talk about things that they would like to see, or things that they see wrong, things they see good, then, within the service. And, um, so, we decided to institute that, and to start doing that, um, on a quarterly basis. And so, we had our first one, um, just a couple of weeks ago, and it was decided that, since I'm part of administration. But I'm not part that does any kind of disciplinary action, that I would be neutral enough to be the liaison between. Employees and administrative partner. So, we had our first meeting, and, uh, you know, we were very concerned, we're like, oh, is this just gonna be a great session, and, and get out of hand or whatever. And it was wonderful, it, it really went well, um, lots of good discussion, and the. You know, there were several things that were brought up, that were then taken to administration and such. But one of the, the biggest ones that, that occupied the biggest amount of time at that meeting. From all of the employees, was about a third truck, whether it be part-time, full-time, but a third truck. And I think in putting that on the agenda, that got misconstrued as being a vehicle purchase, which it wasn't, it's just act meaning a third truck was what that was. So, Tyler has some info on that, but, but it was just from, you know, coming from actually our employees, not from administration asking. But from employee input, and, um, they were kind of excited that people have it, so.
So, the third truck, are you talking about like on-call or third truck, or are you talking about?
It's gonna be a fully staffed, uh, and right now, I don't know the best course actually, it'll be twenty-four, uh, forty-eight truck. Or if it's gonna be Monday through Friday peak truck, eight hour a day, so you can determine where your peak hours are, and that's where you'll place them. Um, we're just looking at the best course, and, and I was basically gonna talk to you guys first before I went ahead and. And put all this time and effort into gathering, gathering, and, and looking at the numbers, and figuring out our best idea.
So, let me ask this question, and I'm. When you have transfers, and I know you have a lot of transfers, I mean, those transfers.
Or.
And I know you can't always tell the hospital when you're, you know, between hours of this and this, if you're gonna transfer somebody, but. Uh, those taking ambulances out of town, and they, quite honestly, and, and there's a flip side of that, cause if, if, if they're on a heart monitor, then. There's somebody else has to go with them besides just. So, so, are we talking about transfers, or are we talking about you're still gonna run a transfer with paramedics?
It, it's gonna be, they're gonna be thrown in rotation, they're still gonna be handling nine-one-ones, they're gonna be handling, uh, the transfers out of the hospital. Uh, I already kinda started back in, uh, this is, it was May tenth, July tenth, I still got a few more days. That, in those two months so far, we've asked for forty-three times for mutual aid from other counties. And whether that be take runs, standbys, uh, help us with transfers, uh, to me, that's a big number, that's a lot of times that we're asking for mutual aid. That's another runs that we're losing, because we're, we're busy with transfers, cause your average transfer basically is, is two hours. Or it depends on where you're going plus.
You go to Bloomington.
If we go to Bloomington, we go to Indy, we went to Winchester, Kentucky, a couple of weeks ago, you know, we go all over, we're not just limited to the Southern Indiana region. And, you know, once you take half of your resources out for, uh, two or three hours, you know, that puts you at a very, very vulnerable state. Uh, as far as getting hammered with nine-one-ones and having transfers. And the biggest thing that we get to kickback, and I already met Martin Pageant, and the interim CEO at the hospital. And we're, we're gonna work together as far as holding some of these transfers, not be so pushy, and get us out the door, and, and be willing to wait. Uh, on us, cause we, I told him, I said, we're nine-one-ones, or we gotta take care of our.
Do we do?
Go ahead, oh, go ahead.
No, we, uh, the other ambulance or other county sometimes come and pick up in our hospitals, and all, if, I'm just.
Yeah, we will, uh, when we request, it, it's, you know, if we can't, um, accommodate what they need, and we're already backed up with other medic runs, and, uh. We have a basic come up for four, we're gonna take the AL return, I mean, if you're like a business, more revenue, we're gonna turn it over, the, the least paying run. Uh, there's been numerous times that just, that David went to Winchester, I was on the ambulance to one thirty that morning, covering the county. While they need nine-one-ones, they did other transfers, so I'm doing what I can, uh, but I, I can't do seven days a week, you know, because we earn more hours. So, that's why if we look at, and we've had a few days that we've known we had waiting returns that take four or five hours, we brought on the third truck for that day. And it has been, it was amazing, because we can still get the transfers out of the hospital, we still cover the nine-one-ones of the county without asking for, from help from other counties for standby. Um, so, there's been days that we've known ahead that we've had waiting returns, uh, like next Monday, we gotta wait your turn to ending. That's gonna be a four or five hour deal, I say, go ahead, let's find a third truck today, that way we can prepare. When we know what happened, and we can prepare, but there's days that we don't know what's going on.
So, you have a, you know what the cost of, of adding the third truck?
I've not got that far, cause I was just wanting to get you guys.
But what's, but what's a, what's a truck costing now, I mean, that's, that'd be the same cost of the third truck.
Um, it just depends, it would be too basic, so it wouldn't be as much as a paramedic and a basic EMT, so it's just either yearly salaries. Um, and whatever insurance, play for you full-time, whatever insurance.
So, we have, I think we have enough manpower now to be able to cover a third truck?
Uh, yeah, we'd be able to pull in, cause every time I open for like a basic position, I'll get seven, eight people that's part-time now that want full-time here. Uh, so, just getting, if I do six people or, or four people, I, I'll be able to fill that full spots fairly quick. So, yeah, yeah, we've got, we've got the truck, all the quit, we got everything, we've got sleep reporters, if we need.
Just manpower.
It's just needing the manpower, and the wages, and the underinsurance is what's gonna be.
So, that's, that's, so what, so I guess what you're saying is, that's turning part-time to full-time?
Mm-hmm, yeah, cause I was talking.
Forty-hour, eight-hour a day.
Cause I was talking to Jacob, and he said, you know, they discussed part-time, uh, on-call stuff, and he's like, part-time is getting kind of pushed to the wayside, they're just adding more trucks. Uh, but I just gotta make sure, A, our run volume supports it, our budget supports it, and our best course action for whatever action we do, whether it be. Peak truck, eight hours, twelve, sixteen, or twenty-four truck.
Forty-three times, you said you had county assist, or outside county assist, uh, was that for a month, or was that for a quarter?
That was May tenth to Ju- the July first, that was still, not the remaining days in July.
And gentlemen and others, the cost that, that's a sub-cost that you're not taking into consideration, is when they call us. We're the ones having to call around every other county, having to find that truck, which takes one of your two dispatchers on duty. Off of answering the phones, so, it would relieve stress off my department also.
So, and, and these, uh, forty-three times with them for transfers are only?
No, that could be, that could be just standby, that could be a nine-one-one, just like the other day they had that wreck at Owen and Thirty-One. Um, I was out on another call, and they said Jackson County, uh, wasn't around. And, and my crews are good about, you know, turning it over real quick, like, hey, we gotta go, they'll cancel if I'm on standby, and we'll take the run. But just, time, this, requesting forty-three times for standby, is to me, that's a lot, and then there is some runs that they are taking. That just means that sometimes we're just too busy.
They're not.
What, so is there a standard, standard price for transfers that is charged, I mean, or is it by the mile?
It depends by the mile, and what they got going on, if they got cardiac monitor, if they got drugs hanging, if they got, if they're intubated, and all, all that kinda goes into.
But you're not, but you're not, you're not, uh, using outside county ambulances for transfers. But you're not, you're not using outside county ambulances for transfers, though. I mean, usually you'll call unless it's an emergency transfer.
Very rare.
Nine times I tend to tell.
Very active, so you don't very active truck, so we'll call, yeah, we use.
You're working out with, with the hospital and say, hey, we'll, we'll be there in a few minutes or?
And there were some few things that Martin wasn't aware of, that was brought to his attention, and he's like, I don't have that. So, I mean, we're, we're, we're working with the hospital very closely, uh, as far as.
And your oversight committee is what you're just doing, right?
Yeah.
You've talked about.
As far as that, no, but they, but they were told that potentially trying to pick up a third truck. And Raymond Jones said, if you're gonna go for it, he said, you gotta prove it now, and you gotta show the numbers. So, I'm just, before I go through all this, I just wanna get your guys to like, go ahead.
So, technically, it's wages and insurance. And quite honestly, right now, you're paying part-time people, so.
And I'm, and when I get full-time people to come in and cover a third truck, I'm paying them.
But you're making, you're making a part-time person, you're already charging a part-time wages for, you're making those part people now full-time, so.
And I'll make sure, you know, the salary agreements and everything.
But you've already got half, you're already budgeting for half of that, because you're already budgeting for part-time work.
Right.
So, okay.
Well, that's my opinion, I believe that anytime that our MS service is on-call, I'm saying, that, uh, we're, I truly believe that we're second to no life in, in the service. And forty-three times, we would've been second if somebody else would've been in this. So, I think if I'd say that budget-wise, you need to look at it, you need to come back and tell us, if you think it's doable, uh, I'm, I'll, I'll, I'll support it. Because I think, and I think the people of this county, and, uh, again, uh, I think our service is second to none. And, uh, I think forty-three times, it could've been.
And especially if it's already in your budget, and you just have to move it around, it's not costing taxpayer money. That's right.
That's all I'm saying. I know it took a long time, I'm sorry.
All right.
Wait a minute, we should talk to him.
Ten minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the Sheriff's Department up there.
Apology to everybody.
Sheriff. How's it, Sheriff?
Probably very quickly.
Yeah.
Don't need to do that.
That's what you're buying yours.
Yeah, here we go. Now, Sheriff, you do what you want on that, but I haven't told you to begin the meeting, we are taking this, so you can put your glasses off and light.
Around looking to you.
From the man who borrowed my.
Yeah, I get it, I get it. Uh, we'll be very, uh, basically all, just gonna surround you guys, and I guess probably talk about, about the equipment for the school of office, school resource. Uh, we take on, we got to prove, hire, a lot of first, we really went off the very power, because we had college, and we had, and all that kind of stuff. So, just, uh, see if we can get that rolling. We, I think, I spoke to the academy, got in front of the academy, and he promised to be four spots. They'll be all three of our school resource that are new hired to go to the academy.
When is that?
September. So.
The academy.
I, I, the, the United Law Enforcement Chairman.
So, why would we be sending a, a resource officer to the academy?
They have to be served by a police officer.
I know, but they also have to be a merit deputy once, you have to be on there. Merit deputy is a year of deputy, isn't it?
Yeah, but.
Or three. At least you're hiring three, and you're not gonna be merit deputies.
No, but we have to have, let me replace them there.
Well, I understand. So, it's.
We have to send them to the academy, no matter what these are.
I understand, but I mean, I guess where I'm getting at here is that, are we hiring people to be resource officers?
We are hiring three deputies, but if we have to produce them as resource officers, we, you know what I'm saying, that's what we're doing.
I understand, but, and you've got other people that are qualified to resource too.
Thank you.
Not just the three.
Yeah, we've got, yeah, we're, our plan is to have everybody in the department.
Yeah, sure. But the three, three new hires aren't, aren't qualified to be a resource officer. The, the resource officer has to be a merit deputy, which is someone that's been through the academy, been a deputy for over a year, so.
Right.
So, these three that you hired aren't resource officers.
They're not being hired as resource officers, but I'm not gonna say that, that at some point in time, we would have to put them there.
Well, I understand that, I mean, on a temporary basis, I understand that.
Right, yeah.
But as far as saying, I'm hiring a guy off the street to be a resource officer.
No.
That's not a certified.
We can't do that, contract, you can't do that anyway.
That's what I'm getting.
Yeah, absolutely, we cannot do that, so, but like I said, we may have to use a part-time to get it too.
Well, I agree with that, cause I mean, if somebody's gonna be sick, or somebody has to be off, then we can put, you know, another deputy or somebody else there, so, yeah, I understand that.
And what we're trying to do is we're gonna get them all, everybody certified, that way that we have to rotate in and out, we don't want people, where people don't want to go to the schools, so.
I'm gonna take a guess, I live back, it's, I'd say sometimes there's officers in school right now that probably aren't certified.
I'd say, you know, I'd say, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I know. He's going down.
Yeah, that's all the county, that's not.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, yeah.
So, just a heads up on that, so I can, I just tell them about the equipment, so we get it every week away, so, and I'll, and I'll go ahead and purchase it. It's no big deal, but I just need to know, you know, we can reverse on it, before we, we talked about the seventy-five, twenty-five. So, I can just go ahead and, well, I started.
Well, I don't know what the agreements wanna be, but I think it was about seventy-five, twenty-five, wasn't it?
Yeah.
We're talking about the magnum, or what are you talking?
No, I'm talking about the cars, the.
Oh, oh, okay.
You know, the last, yeah.
I thought we, I thought we. I'll let you keep moving, we're gonna talk about the.
Oh, no, 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 it's not, yeah.
No, I think, I think for a part, with the, probably with this council, and, uh, at that point, I mean, they, they signed off to agree with this, and that's what they agreed with.
Well, the only problem is, is this is where, this is where the issue is.
Okay.
The agreement that you guys signed only deals with the officers, it says nothing about equipment.
Yeah.
So, you have to have a separate agreement to come to a conclusion on how much.
I think we did, we did all of one of the projects, didn't we?
Yes, it was, it was all, seventy-five, twenty-five, sheet.
Three hundred and fifty, I think.
Well, now, I think at, at that point, I think it's still.
But we took the cars out of it, so that, everybody was arguing about the cars, and so we took the cars out of it, and so, uh.
You need two cars. You know, we're about to have three.
I think, I thought that, I thought that the school was gonna propose something else they would agree with us and with you over that same stuff.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was all in the main agreement, whatever that was.
I think, I think, I think that that's a big one, though.
Okay, I just wanted to just try to go ahead and start getting some of this stuff, cause it takes a while, you know what I'm saying, get this stuff in.
Yeah.
So, we, uh, just can't go pick it up, you know what I'm saying, so. So, I'll, I'll talk to the, to the council and see if they'll give me the approval to go ahead and start purchasing some of this stuff.
And I assume we need to both let it do that with the car equipment, even though it's. So, what kind of cars are we talking about, cause I know at first, some of our plans had brand-new cars, and, and I know you've been going around buying some used cars from other departments. I mean, are we talking used cars, or how, how many cars we have in our fleet now?
Well, we've got, every officer's got a car, and we got two full cars, that's for our, uh, merit duty officers. So, the cars that I've been buying is for reserves and special deputies, that's the money I'm paying for those out in my home, you know, the commissary money, and stuff to pay for those, and option funds, so.
So, how many of those cars we have?
We've got, uh, just purchased, uh, three, we've got around five or six of those.
Five or six cars for reserves?
Yes, and those are all coming from my money, that's the sheriff's office money. Yeah, I'm commissary, I'm, yeah, I am auctioned, and stuff like that, so it's discretionary funds, it's purchasing those. So.
So, are those, I guess, I have a question, are those take-home cars?
No, no, we've got two take-home cars for deputies, that's a lot.
I'm talking about reserves?
No, uh, no, we've only got two.
So, they all, out of the five or six, are they sent at the, at the sheriff's office?
No, our part-timers, we use them too, so.
Okay, so, they're reserves or part-time? So, all the full-time deputies have a.
Take ours? Yeah. That's, oh, it's been, been that way for years.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, cars, I mean.
Well, the bottom line on this is this, no matter how you figure what you do, we're about to have three cars. Cause the three, you know, and so we got two full cars, that's all we've got to deal with right now, so.
What, what do you feel comfortable with, if you were buying used cars on that, uh, for them?
Well.
Is there a kind of area there that you?
It's kind of a gray area, cause here's the reason why, we buy the used cars, we go to reserves, but they don't drive them. You see what I'm saying, they may sit there for a day or two, and they're not driven, you know, and we know that they'll last a long time. But you take an officer that's full-time, then they're gonna be driving them every day, you know, they're gonna be sitting at the school, but during the summer months, they're gonna be working for us, and they'll, they'll need cars, so. My suggestion is, is we buy three of the cars, just put them in the rotation, just like the other three that we have, and we'll give those, you know what I'm saying, hang them out. By seniority, whatever we come up with, on the best way we ever deserve to be called next.
Sheriff, while I'm in here, if you're asking permission to ask the council.
Yeah.
And you can already get a full-time or part-time with them, is that correct? Whatever they give you is what you gotta deal with.
Yeah, I just need to, to get you, cause you all are about to come up with a proposal.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be more of a stand.
That was the argument I think we had with the council last time, was that, uh, they were arguing about the new cars, and, uh, they may not want you there.
Well, I mean, well, whatever they, they'll allow me to have.
And that's why we took them out, because they weren't gonna come to an agreement unless we took the cars out, so.
I've been lucky, I've, I've got a pretty good relationship with Frank Lewis, the Wood County Sheriff, and he's been selling us, they've been doing some replacing the cars, cause they're doing some different fleet stuff. So, I've been able to get some cars with some low mileage and are completely equipped.
So, you, I'm gonna make sure, uh, you just need us to say, yes, you go to council and ask for four.
Yeah.
Three new cars, or whatever works.
Full load.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna pass a motion on that, you want to?
You make the motion?
I make the motion, Sheriff, so council and ask for three cars, or whatever we work out with.
And then, like I said, it'll be, it's gonna be contentious, I know what they're gonna ask me, they're gonna ask me, what kind of agreement has the commissioners came up with, as I said, about twenty-five, where, before they start issuing legislation, we're thinking about that.
I will, I will.
Let me know.
Okay. So, is there, I guess, I'm lost here, is there another agreement with the school to pay for equipment, cause I know originally.
I think there needs to be.
I think the school understands it. Cause I know originally, when we talked to the school, they were all for buying equipment or helping buy equipment. And they didn't wanna own cars, and they said, well, you don't wanna own cars, so, they were upfront with that.
Yes.
The council was the ones that kind of skewed the whole thing, so.
We just need to, you just tell them what you want me to do, is basically what they're, they're asking.
Cause I mean, I, I thought the ideal thing was to buy new cars and, and have them in a rotation, cause, you know, you could put your new deputy or your deputies in, that are road deputies, in the new cars, but the high-mileage cars had a resource officer, so they're, we could always have our new cars. Uh, you made a motion, you seconded it?
I'll, I'll.
I get you now, I'll.
All right, all right, last thing, real quick here, uh, I'm gonna be asking the council next time, uh, the next council meeting, to give me that I need to purchase a full-body scanner. And the reason why is, is because of fentanyl, that's the only reason. We've sent, Doug told me approximately eight people, we've had to send to the hospital since first of the year to have their, have x-rayed their body, you know, carry this x-ray. Issue we've got is, is the word's out on the street now, that if you, uh, police come, you got heroin, fentanyl, meth, whatever, you swallow it.
Or.
Yeah, or shove it, in private places, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, and our officers do, do strip searches of those folks, we think, however, when they swallow, or they, you know what I'm saying, push up before we can get it. Uh, the only thing that concerns me about the whole deal is, is it's fentanyl, uh, it's killing people, and it's only gonna take, unfortunately, yeah. And I've talked to every, just about everybody in Southern Indiana, the jails, and some of them already have them, and the ones that don't have them are already in the process of, uh, trying to find some way to get them. And it's just hit all of a sudden, because of fentanyl, basically, is the reason why.
And so, it's, it's more than just the, the scanners, it's, it's like an x-ray machine.
It's an extra, and it's just like to go to the airport, when you walk through the airports, exactly what it is, it's a.
If somebody has something in them, you can see it, and your next process may be.
The hospital regardless?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, and, but, uh, that way, we know it's there, uh, now, the only thing we can do is, is if they go to the hospital, and they refuse to be x-rayed, or want to be x-rayed, you know what I'm saying, bring them back. Then we're just sitting there on twenty-four hour watch, trying to make sure none happens.
We use. That's what we used to.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, fentanyl's changed the whole game, that's just changed the whole game, so, uh, and then, those, there's a couple of options. We've picked out, we think, one, and buy it straight out, they're expensive, about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Uh, but there was also a lease option that they had, like, you lease it for five years, fifty thousand a year, that includes maintenance, the upkeep, the training, everything that we need to do it. So, and that's like fifty thousand a year for five, and then we would own it, for three years, I'm sorry, I told you five, for three years.
So, that's a good deal, you know?
Yeah, it would've been, yeah, and, and we would own it, and so, and of course, I wish I wasn't here asking for this, but unfortunately, it's something that everybody's.
I guess with that price, and I, I think you said it, but I mean, is that, is there a maintenance agreement with that?
Yeah, it's supposed to be completely maintained, anything breaks, so they'll take care of it, and it also involves training, you gotta have the training and certified. And one thing about the instrument that we like about the one we're looking at is, is that we can use it for work release too, because all x-ray machines, I didn't realize this, all x-ray machines, you can only be x-rayed so many times a year. Uh, but this machine here, the instrument, I should call it a machine at that price, or it's actually an instrument.
So, you are doing work, I'm doing, checking, doing work release?
Well, just our prisoners that come out to work.
Okay.
Not, right, yeah, not for work, or, yeah, right, you know, the, the work tanks, we've got, I guess, the best way. Uh, we can scan them every day, uh, and it automatically keeps record of what it does, and when they come through, uh, we can push buttons and do things that they don't know if they're not being x-rayed.
Is this a, is this a radiation type thing?
It's, I don't know how, I don't know what the technology is, I've actually got a guy that's gonna come on to present to the council, and he's gonna give the whole presentation on it, uh, to explain it.
Every person would come in, I think, with that?
Yeah.
Kind of, that makes sense.
And it, uh, like I said, that, that's expensive, a hundred and fifty, but you should very well know, if we, something happens, we'd probably, might be.
I have a question, cause you, you said that I think, if you take them to the hospital, and they refuse to go through the x-ray, x-ray machine out there, can they refuse to go through it at the jail?
Uh, no, if they do, we don't accept them, what happens is, is this.
Well, I, I just refuse anything, you just can't put me in jail.
Yeah, well, what would happen is, is then, when the, the police department would take them to the hospital instead of us, they would take them to the hospital, and then, uh, they'd be under space, the doctor would lock them, and then they would be.
I'll be answered, but I don't think they refuse, can they, they'll walk to a, a down, a search down, or a.
I think they probably.
They can refuse anything, but.
Well, yeah, but you have to put it through anyone.
Yeah, absolutely, if we get a court order, if it comes, then we can get a court order.
Yeah. Sure, just think about the case in there.
Absolutely, and it might.
The only person.
It'll have.
Or what if they have some sort of medical devices, that, yeah.
They said it shouldn't affect anything, yeah, it's the same as an airport, they said, and it'll detect plastic, if anything is in them, and they showed us a demonstration, when they walked in there, you could see this big balloon, the guy had swallowed, and this was sent out, and it's cold, and that was like. And the reason why we have to do that is, is, of course, uh, the county jail can refuse prisoners if they know they're sick, cause that's where it is. What we will do is, is that body scan will be before the actual book-in procedure, they'll walk in, if we see something in them, then we can tell the officers, hey, need to take them to hospital, it's right here, they've got, and if you have a problem, then they can get a hold of the judge and get a search warrant, have it removed.
Very first, very police, but then the good.
Yeah, well, it's something we have to do, you know, there are a lot of other reasons there are in the cap, so we can only make progress.
Plus, and we're being, so, like, people can hide cell phones. Should there be a?
Yeah, I do.
I don't wanna. Should there be, uh, assuming there's gonna be a policy written, that you probably should okay, or something?
Yeah, I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they have a proposed one.
They do, the company will have all that, they said they've got it, and it's a removable, it's a, it's not lock down there, where it's put there, you even know a lock pin, it has to be there forever. It's actually portable, we do it, so if something was to be happening, then, hey, we think we need this at the courthouse for next week.
Yeah.
You know, it could be.
Uh, you probably answered this, but, I hear you said it would guarantee for three years.
It'd be three years, yeah.
And then after that, it's probably still good, or we have to get.
I don't, yeah, I, I don't know that, yeah.
I mean, my, I don't, curious if it's like a full-approved vest, it might be good after years, but you can't.
No, I, I don't think so, I think, cause there's some, some of these people who've used it for years, and we tried to find one, you know, the LISO program.
Yeah.
And they just didn't have it.
I got a.
People grab them up, yeah.
I got a question then, and if a wrestling officer arrests somebody, and they tell them, hey, you have anything on you? Cause is it not true that if you get to jail and you're trying to sneak something in, that's another charge?
Yes, trafficking.
All right, so, if this person goes in to, or refuses, or does go through the scanner, and you realize he's got something on him, then that's another additional charge, correct?
Yeah, it'd be trafficking.
Is that something that we need to watch as far as legality, cause now we just charge them, it's something else to go.
I don't think it's.
They're not booked in yet, yeah, see, but that's the reason why you do it before they're booked in, because, just because they get to jail, but I mean, if they're in custody, they have to be booked in. At the point that they're booked in, they get your picture taken, processed, then they're booked in.
So, we would do that.
No matter who comes to take them to the hospital, who's gonna pay the bill at that point?
Yeah.
Either us, or the.
Or the local police, or the county.
I'm just trying, we gotta be more legal, so, I'm covering the rear end. I'm just trying, we gotta be more legal, so I'm covering the rear end on the legal end of it, because now you, now you know they have something, and uh.
And we've been, we've had, unfortunately, you know what I'm saying, we've had some sneaking.
I was over there one day and a guy, and.
Bless him out in the middle. So unfortunately, like I said, it's something we have to add now.
I'll make a motion, Jerry, go to the council and ask for the first full body scanner. I think God would like to, I think you need to amend that, I think, I think we do the lease, because then you can have the maintenance on it.
I would like to leave it at this and let him and the council work it out, because they'll be paying for it. Either way, that's my my motion is to let him go to the council and they can work out the details. Just my motion, whatever. Do you want a minute, I don't care, I just.
I'd just rather see the, because you, you don't know what.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what the maintenance agreement is if we buy purchases straight out of there, so we will know that when he gives that presentation, he's gonna tell us.
I'd rather have the the three years of, now they're gonna maintain it for three years, and and then you can see, you know, a three year, a ten to three years, you own it anyway, so. So, I, that's fine.
And I'm okay with that too, I I'd like to leave it open, and if you want it, I'll. Uh, motion's been made to allow him to purchase that, hopefully with the three year, uh, lease to own. And it would have the, uh, maintenance agreement in it, uh, again. If it is a maintenance agreement, three years anyway, they normally go there, but. Motion's been made in second, so I'll make an unanimous, and uh, you can go to the council and see how, what they think's better. If I write a check, most of the time it'll tell you how you're gonna do it.
Yeah, I agree, that's fine, that's fine, yeah, and one last thing we wanna do, you guys, let you guys start thinking about, when you start thinking about courthouse security. Because I know it's been brought up several times, you tell me what you want, if you want about our deputies, if you want your jailers, whatever it is, because we do have the magistrate now that started it. So we're gonna have to do some reconfiguration, because if we have prisoners coming downstairs, prisoners coming upstairs, we're gonna have to send more people over to the jail. From the jail, you know, we're watching them, and we'd probably need a staging area to put them all in, so just let me know what you guys think you wanna do.
I prefer the, I prefer the jailers, so.
Okay.
I think, I think I've talked to other commissioners around Southern Indiana, that's what they all use, so. But you, I mean, you look at the options and come back and tell us what the best option is.
And I'm with you, I prefer the jail, or your your people do it, but we have to revisit, make what their title be. And Judge Mount will turn that upstairs up there into a staging area for where to go. Yes, and that's just another thing in the process, we gotta move somebody. But, yeah, I'd rather have a deputy there, like I said, we're gonna need three, we're not talking about two. And I've talked to Judge Howard also about the possibility of making this whole time, I don't know if they're gonna do that or not, but uh, just something I'd do, have them see what they call it.
I'm not sure that, uh, that the court even has anybody.
I think they do, but if one of them really worked, they're like, plenty of them, basically, they signed, you know, in Allen Court.
Okay, okay, yeah, just, do you guys, you know, so I I'd say, I I'll go either way, whichever one I do, just let me know what you want me to do, and we'll make it work.
I think we need three county employees, so.
Totally.
I'll for definitely get go, so.
Well, if you. By the way, uh, the troopers that are working now could also come to work for you if they wanted, I mean, that'd be up to you, but they could also become part time people, still do this. I couldn't.
Well, they had to be hired on, an employee.
That's what I mean, you could hire them on.
If they're troopers, you can, so. If they're state police troopers, they can't work part time, there's a a clause, there are gonna be state police regulations against that.
But the guys that are part time working with the alliance could.
For the, for the sheriff's department and a part time basis.
Some of the guys I know do that.
Through the alliance, they can do like a security gig if they get assigned.
I just know some, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe not, I don't know.
I'd rather be somebody local that knows people around here, because like you said, these guys don't know who's walking in here, and you know that person, and you know who they are, and so.
I tell you what else, if you, the guys give me the group, then what I'll do is I'll go ahead and get a plan together, and I'll break into the next meeting, what we think it's gonna take, because we've already got eight, you have a detector sitting down there.
There should be two.
There's one at the jail too, there's someone who can use that.
There's, there were.
There's two here?
Dan got two. There's two of them that sit, one's sitting down here, I think we finally moved it somewhere else, but it, there was actually dominated from Park County there.
I'll, I'll put together a plan using jailers, correct?
That's why, I mean.
We can see what that, what that entails, yeah, our biggest thing was, was before was the cost.
Yes.
That was involved.
Yes.
And where they would be, you know, once they become, with the state police alliance, that was thirty five dollars an hour. It was thirty, I think it went up to thirty five, it was thirty five dollars an hour, there's no benefits, there's no reinsurance, there's no none of that. So we gotta figure donuts to donuts here, and uh.
Here, I've got.
At that point, that's what we gotta look at, and it is, is okay, is the jailers, you know, are we gonna have to hire more full time employees? Then you gotta figure out, you know, uh, retirement, a lot of things you gotta factor into that. So uh, that's, that's some of the things we did, now, with the, and we talked about, and I know before, the the recommendation was, was that we use the east end door to enter, uh, through. Now, according to the, uh, oh, what?
US Marshals.
US Marshals report, they suggested the front door. Now, the problem that was being is the front door, we talked about this last meeting, some, is you really, there's, you don't have room to get people through there. And, you know, they're gonna be lined up outside, so to speak, and we looked at this over here, but when you really get into it, it's almost bad, that we don't have a lot of room on this east end side. So if it's something that we, you know, probably don't need, in my opinion, to use the front door at some point, then it'll probably be looking at, doing some reconfiguration. Of how we're gonna get people without them standing outside.
Yeah.
Get it, snowing or raining, how are we gonna get them in that front door in a time and a manner? And that's, that's some of the things that we're looking at too, and then like, then we have some ideas, but I don't know that this over here is gonna be the, the best scenario on that east end side. Because what we found out was through ADA, that maybe that, uh, even the ramble with our made up, the ADA requirements. That, because we do have an elevator, what they come through the front door, they can get ready and get on, but we have to, I'd say reconfigure some.
You had that report from, from that committee?
I seen it today.
So you saw where, because I think Dan actually figured out the deputies, or the county deputies, or jailers, or somebody, he was going to put in here, I think he even had to. Figure out how much it was gonna cost to do it.
Yeah, I've got the whole thing.
It's in, because I got it too.
One thing is a little bit different, is now that we've had this, another magistrate, see, that kind of goes a little bit, but it's not the extra place, that ain't gonna be affected, but we're gonna have to, you know, more manpower just because of that, and so. But I'll put together two or three different plans, I'll bring it to you, and see which one you think y'all like, and we'll go from there.
And you got, uh, Jacob working up to the court chair now, anywhere up there, somewhere online, I I've heard you just, we might want to change status.
Well, I'm not sure, I can't make them a special deputy, you know, doing that stuff.
Yeah, totally, they could arrest you, you could see that.
And even, we'll put together something.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Sheriff, you have any questions for me?
Uh, no, you're gonna be around a lot longer here.
No, I should be ready to go.
Okay, uh, and and let me ask you one question, and and this is gonna come up later, right here, what I'm talking about. We, we as a board of commissioners, Pasco County ordinance, I believe, uh, if I'm not mistaken, to limit the, uh, speed limits on all county roads to forty five miles per hour.
All county roads?
All county roads, across, we done a blanket, didn't, uh, forty five miles per hour. Now, with that being said, uh, we, my understanding, we could pick areas of high population to be able to limit that to like thirty five, was it? Is that what it was?
It's the state statute on it.
Is that, and and that sound about right to you there? And and so what I'm, we have one road, we'll talk about it a little farther into the meeting, right here at the end of the meeting, but there is one road that we need to do, because it's the issue to take. Run around for the state highway project, or they think it's a United Center Speedway. But I just wanna be sure that I'm right on that, that there, you know, I know Indiana, the state of Indiana, they say fifty five miles per hour on a county highway. But when we done the ordinance, and we advertised that, I I think if I'm not mistaken, that we can.
I think it was right before a payment.
And it might have been, and uh, to put a forty five mile per hour speed limit on the county, then at that point, is it enforceable, I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, let's look, we'll look.
Yeah, because there's some stipulations to that, we can figure it out, it's no big deal, just let me know if you've got.
About when you say county highway.
Yes.
What what determines a county highway, some roads are there, some are wider places, they come down Leo Road, you sit there, they come down through there, probably fifty, sixty mile an hour. No one, they get a stop at thirty one, but it's, it's wider, it's top, and there it's bottom, it's not.
They're about a foot difference.
Yeah, if you ever got like a line, you know, in the middle. And you don't know. Any county, any county road is, is a blanket policy, so to speak, that it's any county road is forty five.
I need to share, or I have people out there on them county road.
I'm trying, it's just that they're all fifty five, you know what I'm saying?
But here's slowly get a ticket, I said, if you're right here.
Here's a suggestion.
Wanna know where Lake Road is?
Yeah.
That's what my suggestion would be, real quick on that, is is this, and then Bob, of course, I figured out, is either we can write it under a, uh, traffic control device as a speed deterrent, and we might be able to do that under a state statute. But under a county ordinance, we'd have to write it under a county ordinance, and you guys would have to be the ones that were prosecuted, because it would be against the state statute. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and then the third thing would be is that even though we do that, I'm not sure that if it would be enforceable, because at one point in time, the state passed a law that said you had to have a road study done, to be able to.
Yeah. We need to look at all that.
Yeah, it's it's complex, I guess.
If we can charge them under any state statute, it's better, because we have more teeth than we have to fight. Otherwise, it's a civil matter, it doesn't go in, not as usual. It's like an animal control ordinance violation.
Well, it's like.
Yeah, there you go.
Joe, this is Joe Eaton, and Joe is from, uh, lives on Van Campin Road, I think, uh.
Yeah, both me and Ron.
Yeah, Ron does too, and uh, that is being used to run it out for that construction site there, and uh, again, uh, it's like anything else, it's uh. We did repave the Van Campin Road, and so, uh.
It's my.
That, that, now, now it's, you can't hold them back, so to speak, and they're still going around through there, and there are several houses down that road, that's pretty, pretty heavily populated area there, and is it something that we could?
I'll tell you, one instance, I'll bring it up, it's been a month ago, I was sitting in the front porch, young couple always walks up and down the road, pushing a stroller. One car come flying down off thirty one, here come another one flying up, they almost met, their kids pushing that stroller. They come to the street, they almost jumped in the ditch, pushing an infant and a child. I mean, that would've been a fatality if he did, I mean.
Yeah, I get, I think what we have to do is I'll put some extra patrols out there, uh, this is the first that I knew about the.
Well, and then also, you can't even redo your ditch one, one, I can't see, you know, that as well as anybody, is, I can hear them coming, but I can't see them coming. You can't even, because they just come down through there a few facts.
And unfortunately, fifty five's the speed limit there, you know what I'm saying, so we need to, anything we can do, you know what I'm saying, to to reduce that, I'd be more happy to.
I've seen people passing people on that.
There is a lot of them that pass, that's good. John sat down there at the bottom of the road hill, through the road hill, something he was in old, and and he can tell you how fast they come down through there. Because of the hill, and there's like, uh, let's say eleven driveways between there and highway.
Speed change.
People pull out.
I think Austin's already doing this, they're already operating off county ordinances, and I think people just come in and pay the fee.
Yeah.
And I think that wouldn't be where.
It's where everybody's.
I'm just worried for them to decide, I think.
There.
One, and and I think we've done this in the past right here, and I don't know where we got the the equipment at, maybe you have it, maybe you don't, but they had the, actually, this is your speed.
Yeah, that helped.
And uh, putting that up to where pick the cars that was on that road, it was actually clocking them as they was coming up, and lots of times it would, lots of.
I left one over.
Lots of them there, lots of times it would slow, it would slow that, if there was one that. And uh, there was, uh, if we've got something like that, or if they want, it might, lots of times people.
They don't realize.
May not realize they're running that fast, but, you know, if they're looking at this and it's saying, okay, you're running fifty five miles per hour down through here.
I tell you, when schools incision, they come down and go to road, and then mothers in a hurry to get the kids to school, get to work. You, you, you just kind of sit down and watch.
We're very car, we're very. All right, let's, let's see if we can find, if we have to rent one for a short time, or borrow one from another department.
I know Austin's got one.
Yeah.
We have one, we're having one out there for a while too.
And it, and it may just put a little awareness to them, and and maybe, I don't know, uh, even I know, uh, uh, on your part, certainly I think we're gonna have more teeth into it, our part, but uh. It may be something that you might on social media and through a.
We'll do a campaign.
Say that, you know, well, we've got people that live here, and they got children, and and uh, we need to, we need to be watching our speeds, because we're gonna be watching your speeds.
Yeah, that's what, we're gonna do a campaign, we'll put a kickoff campaign for county roads, speed on county roads, and everything.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Really, if you're forty five mile an hour, what are we charging people with now, forty five or fifty five?
Fifty five.
Okay.
It's fifty five.
Every road is.
We're charging on state. Statute, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so. And uh, I have people here who play about much signs.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, anything, let me know.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Um, Scott County four oh one, eight plan resolution, one, 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 we got it.
This is your four fifty seven plan transition, uh, I signed about eleven documents the other day, um, whatever you're talking about, switching from one American to your massive mutual investment plan. The four oh four eight plan is the county's match money side, so you commissioners are in, uh, the trustee of that plan, so this is a resolution, and I've got the originals here, should you adopt this. And this is complete, I think probably the last made document we have, and blackout starts Friday, so at the closing business on July the fifth, all the investments are frozen. So they can determine their value and then move them over to the new plan for massive, so we're getting ready to go into blackout for about two weeks, so that can give the funds perfect. But this is your half, the six percent match, this is where your money's at.
Okay, all right, did I hear a motion to, uh, sign this? I'll make it unanimous, is that the original that you want done there?
Please, and that big document attached to it is all the declarations. You guys want to read all those?
Okay, you have nothing to add?
Yes.
Uh, next is consideration of the June, uh, twenty nineteen month of claims.
They're there in the Berkeley binder.
You guys, that chess, oh, flip it down? I'm letting, I'm letting, second unanimous. While he's signing that, uh, also the payroll dockets, do I hear a motion?
There's one claim I saw on, on the end of that prior regency claim.
What's that?
You've got a copy of that, it's a travel claim for, um, Scott School to attend conference, um, I guess I think in three people, maybe eight, two or three nights, but anyway. It's nine hundred ninety seven dollars and ten cents, and they need a check, so they can, uh, travel, take a check with them to the hotel. So this is just outside of the claims that you have there, this travel claim, it's, it's just a conference travel.
Okay. Your motion is approved, I'll give you a final vote. Motion, nine seconds.
Second.
Unanimous. Anywhere on here, you got that?
I've got just a bracket where it's highlighted.
And then, uh, let me, John, you had signed this one down. And we can, the payroll, this is for, pay for the accounts, and that's just, we do that with payroll every month, uh.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, second.
And that is two payroll dockets at one time, because we had payroll going out on Friday, and it's already processed, so.
I'll make a motion, that's up, uh, second.
All right. We just done the ratification there, consideration of management during the fifth, and June thirteenth, have you had a chance to let?
I have some, I'm making motion like second. Second.
Both of them.
Yes.
Sign off in that book there, I guess. FMLAs?
Two.
I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, second.
All right, next up is the pest, the pest control services.
That, I asked for that to be put on here. Quite simply, because I went up to the county courts with Marcia, and she's got a bug manifestation problem, and she's also got a window that's open, you can see all the way through the bug. And in the process, I called Tony downstairs, and he could somebody up there to spray that and do, do all that. And he did, does wonderful job, and all that worked out real well. But in the process, I asked him to see what we're doing now for bugs in the courthouse. And it turns out Mr. Pest is doing it, and I don't know if we agreed, or how that came about, or whatever, but they're just doing the hallways. They're not doing the courts, or any rooms or anything I know of, the way, way it was claimed to me. And, and the question came up to me, is, do we have any local people to do this? Best to understand, Mr. Pest is probably, is out of Charleston. And come to find out, we have two locals. But right now, and I talked to Sheriff also, they're using Black Diamond over there, which is in Albany. So I'm just sitting there wondering why we're not using local people here. I don't think we've got a contract that's we're having. Do you get, you can find?
I haven't looked, actually looked, but tell me how we think, but I have a copy.
Well, whether it be now, or want to look at it, do something next, maybe any month, whatever, I would like to, we got Lemons, Bobby Lemons down here, and he lives here in Scottsburg, Jacob Zinder does it, he used to do it at jail all the time. And both of them have expressed desire that they would like to be involved. Now, Mr. Pest also, they're charging, I think what they told me was sixty dollars a month to do the hallways, and it's two hundred a month to do the whole courthouse. And I don't have any problems then with what they do, or the other companies, it's just if we can do it locally, I think it'd be a good idea for us to look at it.
I'd be kind of, I'd be curious to know why we're doing just the hallway.
Well, I think we need to.
Well, and I said, I don't, you guys have been around me, did we ever even vote or let them do it?
No, I think, I think again, it's, I think I've called Billy MacIntyre, I think he just.
He just called him.
He called somebody, and got the first person in there, and the next thing, we have this jail over there. I would tell you, you know, it's not everything's gonna pass before us, it's gonna be the people that's in charge of that department, and I think that's kind of where it got. Again, I agree one hundred percent, if we can use somebody local, I'm all for that. A lot of times, we don't know that until, just like this, it's brought to our attention. But again, I, I'm not agree with Mike, all right, we're just doing the hallways, you know.
Many other officers.
Well, but they all ask him, either price goes up from sixty dollars to two hundred dollars this company.
Well, they're all leaving the hallway, getting up.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, how the bug is, what more room in here to step there in the hallway, they gonna get stepped on, you know? But if we somewhere on the line, make this a contract where we could look at our local, we wanted to. I mean, I, I'm okay with letting Tony and them make decisions, but it just looks to me like a contract to local is a good idea.
That's, which is, I just brought it up for a sketch. I think they need to bring a bid. And I think we need to.
I agree.
I think we need to bid.
Yes.
Kevin, I got a question. I know we changed the, I meant to ask Jerry when he was here, but we, when they changed that uniform thing for jail, did they get a vendor to supply those uniforms, or did they bid for a vendor, or is there just a certain vendor that does that, or how is that?
Actually, I'm really not for sure how, which, which vendor they've been with.
I meant to ask him about that, because I was just kind of curious, that they're using the same people, they're just doing it in a different way, manner, or what?
Yeah, I'm not really, we could probably look at the claims in there and see if they're using, if they had to buy or purchase something.
I'm just curious, I know that policy or that, that whole thing changed.
Yeah, we can look, I think, if I find that, I can text that to you.
Do we want to, just leave that to that as it is?
No, you mean, you're talking about the pest control?
No, I think that we need to, I think we need to have a contract with one pest control, or, and we've got more than one county building, so I'm sure they're all got their own, calling somebody to do a pest.
Does the health department have anybody that wants to check with them?
So I'm sure. Another option also, I think we got two locals, one here, one in jail, or, I mean, split up, but I like the idea of using local.
I think, I think we've all, also that, that we certainly want to use local, well, if we can, but I think what we're gonna have to do is probably put it out for bid, okay, here's what we want, we want the whole building sprayed, not just the hallways, and give us, you know, come back with a quote, and let's see what they got.
Yeah, we want to open it up to people outside the county.
So is, so is, well, you can't, I don't think.
I don't think you're limiting that.
No, I don't think we're limiting that. But is.
I don't think so, I don't think.
Is the jail doing the same person?
No.
The courthouse, they're using Black Diamond. New Albany, I don't think that's.
And that may be too, I mean, now, that we could do, I think, is, is, so you know, we want to use the same pest control company for all county buildings, whether it's the county highway, whether it's nine one one, whether it's the courthouse, or whether it's the jail, whatever, maybe that's something that we could look at and say, okay, let's, let's, let's take a quote for doing everything that the county owns, and at that point.
And I quite honestly don't know, all the county buildings have been tested right now, I have no doubt.
I, I, yeah, I'm, I agree with you there.
But if it's two hundred a month, do just the courthouse, we start adding jail, health, I mean, we might not be as cheap as we want, that's why we need to look.
Let me ask you a question. Why would they spray?
Pardon me?
Why they spray every month?
It's according, I, I think the biggest thing is what they're spraying for, and, and I think, I think some of the things that, I, I think bed bugs is one that comes through.
Especially the jail.
Comes into the jail, comes into the court systems, and I think, and I think the family court coming in, they, they kind of getting festered up there, and I think that's the reason for, I can't be one of them.
So the county courts, if you had bed bugs in there.
I think, yeah.
And it's, I, I use Black Diamond, they come three times a year.
Yeah.
And they spray around the house, too.
Let me tell you who we pay to do all that. In case you look at those claims, not right now, but let's get, let's get to the next meeting, see, see who you pay, L. Antrim.
Yeah, let's, let's, and, and, you know, let's.
Let's.
Yeah, let's, let's get some prices and see who we're paying, and come back and revisit this, and we can settle.
I would like to know that next time.
Anyway, they sprayed upstairs for the county board, helped her quite a bit, but they, I'll fly them on this, I'll just keep going, she's got a window in there that was apparently put in the new section of building nine six, that it's basically, you can look through the edge and see all the way outside until air coming through there. So Tony and I have worked through, well, to, and we try to find out who put these windows in, because Scottsburg Glasses, they can fix it or replace it, but they have to know who put them in, and we're talking twenty-three years ago.
Is it on the, on the new edition or the old edition?
On the new edition.
On the new side.
So I have a book in the office store that was the Parko Construction Book for the renovation of this site, and PC builders out of New Albany were the ones that were responsible for the, it was subcontractor to the contractor for the wood, wood stash windows on this side, because they couldn't find the label or anything, you said, to identify the type of, and, but for some reason, they needed to know that.
Why would they need to know that?
I don't know.
I don't.
I don't know.
Window to window.
I'm not a glass man either, so I don't know.
So is it a new information?
Glass or the cock?
It's glass. I don't know.
Wall, you know, if you can get some.
You can see them.
I don't know, it's probably settled somewhere, Mike, I, I'm not a glass guy, I don't know.
So it's not the window technically, it's the.
It's the stash or whatever.
Between the window and the, and the wall.
Yeah, you can clearly see clear.
Correct. Go get a can of.
Phone?
Well, maybe that's the answer, but we, and if you want to.
I guess look at them that way, and you tell that stuff.
Well, it's probably one of the main sources where the bugs come in, I don't know.
I'd say it comes.
I think it, I know the only, and we had replacement windows put in the old parts, correct? All right, we'll come back on the pest control, John, anything else on your part?
No, sir.
What about you, Mike?
Last thing, have we got any further on carpet flooring, or anything upstairs?
No.
Well, actually, the whole downstairs, too.
No, I haven't, I mean.
Was Tony or Josh getting quotes from?
We, we talked about with Josh, about the reporter store, because we somehow can't come to a particular arrangement on that one, and he's given me that it would take him about eight hours, I told him, I said, give me worst case scenario, that's what we need to, to plan for, and I think you guys need to be looking at more options. Marilyn, I, I gave you a letter from her, from the reporter, Marilyn, send it back in your, your folder to review, again, probably next meeting, we probably need to read that, maybe you talk it between now and then, and I can see if they won't work on some of that, because, you know, they.
But the flooring, the door, I understand on that door, but on the flooring, we've not, nobody's given us quotes.
I don't have any information yet.
Well, I'm lost on the door, what's, what's, what's going on with the door that is so hard to put a door in? I think.
I think that.
Yeah, at first I thought it was Tony said he might have paid out his budget to put it in, and then, so what's, what's.
I've had questions with, at the council, not next week, so, whatever, he says that door good, I think Marilyn's right about that door, I mean, that's the impression I have.
You need to read Marilyn's letter.
Okay, and you sent the letter to where?
Um, you got it, Marilyn, let the copy for the commissioners, and I'll let it for you guys to read. No, you've got it in your pack.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's, it's not being uploaded. I let it, there were two documents I laid off to decide, here it is.
Okay, all right.
Marty's zoning report and, and that letter. Marilyn has a, a door attached there, but there's no, there's no jam with that door, so that's gonna be a different construction cost. I think it's just a slab with artwork hardware.
This is almost as bad as a railroad. It's a door.
Okay.
Well, I don't get a price on there, but you get a pound.
I don't know.
It's expensive. Speaking of railroad, I don't know how many people at the fair was happy, heck, that we got the fairgrounds reopened.
Yeah.
As busy as the fair was, so.
Counselor, you got anything?
No.
I've got a couple things, real quick, and real quick. First is, Mike touched on the fair, you know, publicly, I think, just like to offer up congratulations and kudos, and all the accolades to the Scott County Fair Board, to the fair this year, I think they've done a wonderful job, I think, you know, I know that they had a bigger crowd this year than they had in a long time, and rightly so, it looked nice, everything they've done down there, and I think they need to be recognized for that. Whether they did participate a little bit, I think, and they got most of their grandstand events in, I think they had a bunch of one, but there were two, two of them, the, overall, I thought it was, I thought it was good, and it's always good for Scott County that you, the fair is, have people out and about, and coming into our county, from other counties, and we appreciate that. Other thing is, is, we'll talk a little bit here, I, I, I just want to point out at this meeting tonight here, that we just sit here and voted to allow Jerry to go to acquire a full body scanner at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And one of the things that we're looking at here, and folks, we, I really hope that we can turn this somehow, but this opioid crisis is not only for us, it's for everybody. And I've seen statistics on this, and across the United States, and it's costing every small, every community a fortune, and I just hope that somewhere, somehow, we can turn this and, and start turning back the, because it is a costly, opioids is costing, you know, I seen a thing the other day, and it talked about, you know, the United States is worried about terrorism from abroad, and then it showed the opioid epidemic across the United States, and it's not just in one state, it's in every state, and it's a scary time that we live in, and again, we just, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it's strictly for drugs, and that's what it's costing us.
I got a comment about that. The only problem that I see with that is that you're making it hard on other people that need the drug, you're making it extremely hard for them to get it, you're making it extremely hard for them to just take it without getting demeaned by why you, or why you're taking.
Again, I think, again, I will say this, I've said this all along, that that relies upon the medical profession, the medical profession is the one that's in charge of giving them, and I think the medical profession is the one that will have to answer the questions somewhere so long, along the way, is okay, is, I'm certainly a firm believer in, in that there is people that truly need them, and there's people that are using it, and we all know that.
I agree.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Motion made, second, we're out of here, thank you all for coming.
Shirley showed up, he said, Rob gets evil. What the heck? Why would you do your shit?
You did, you're good, John.
Turn that page, you can turn that.
You'll sign my book.
I said you move, just break you up.
Don't, I'll every tan, Mike.
Okay, let's see, we need to turn off.